Well, go ahead, excuse me, and get this meeting called to order with roll call, please.
Kim York.
Here.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Ashley Jones.
Here.
Bill Lowe.
Here.
Aaron Hallett.
Here.
Billy King.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. On to the budget planning. Dr. Monsis.
All right, so we have been working over the past several months towards this date and planning for budgeting for next school year. That's definitely an ongoing process as we not only analyze our current year budget and revisit all the assumptions that were built into that, we start then working on assumptions in the new year. Cindy Bias then has really kind of shepherded all that process and effort along the way, and so I'm going to turn it over to her. And we're going to just basically walk through the planning documents that we have for you tonight, and then when we get down to some of the kind of new decision items for next year that we want to at least talk about, we'd be glad to take your input and answer questions along the way. So with that, I'll turn it over to Cindy.
Okay. Thank you for coming tonight. I'm excited to talk about the budget. You've each been given a packet with the documents in it, and the first page is the draft of the cover for our budget book this year. I think it's one of the most fun things I get to do, is pick a picture that I think shows how we use our resources to carry out our mission. And so this year, we're featuring the Husky Pack Breakfast, which I know a lot of you are involved in. In fact, there's Paul right on the cover page. But this is just one example of the many projects that we have going on throughout the district to help develop our success-ready students in line with our strategic plans. So happy to show that to you. The next page gives our budget development calendar, which you've seen before, and this is very similar to the calendar that we've had every year. Right now, we're in March, we're on schedule with having our preliminary budget work session here. Later this month, at your regular board meeting, you'll be given the staffing, new staffing positions that we are going to be discussing tonight and getting consensus on. And then we work toward the Team Ray Peck recommendations to you. We start putting all the pieces together in the actual budget book, and we'll discuss it again at the June board retreat, and then at the June regular board meeting is when you'll give final approval on the budget. Okay, the next page is September enrollment, and I included in this just to memorialize the enrollment figures that were used to develop our revenues in this budget draft. So these are a little bit more conservative than the RPS.
RSP.
RSP. RSP projections that you saw with the long-range facility plan, but it's using the same trend from year to year. It's just a few less students each year, so we can get a little bit more conservative with our revenue projections. Are there any questions on that? Okay, moving along. The next page is a summary of our revenues for our operating funds. So this doesn't include debt service or capital projects. We've put this together the same as we have in previous years, where it shows our fiscal year 19 last year's actual, this year's currently revised budget, and then what we're proposing for the fiscal year 21 budget. And then it shows you the change for each of those items. The biggest component of our local revenue is, of course, our property taxes, and we're with this estimate, we're predicting that our operating levy, which we had to roll back last year, will remain the same for this year. We expect that we're going to get an estimate of our assessed valuation from the county assessor in early April, but it's not a reassessment year. We're just expecting somewhat of a boost from new construction, so we think we've got a pretty good estimate already. The next line, Proposition C, sales tax is distributed by the state based on our prior year's weighted average daily attendance, so we're seeing an increase there based on the increases we've had in enrollment. Skipping down to our state revenues, of course, our biggest revenue there is the formula, basic formula, that's based on our projected enrollment and the state adequacy target. And I think you've already been informed by Dr. Monsis in the weekly budget updates that that state adequacy target is going to stay the same for the next two years, so we're not expecting a huge increase there, just an increase in enrollment. So those three lines make up about 62.8 million, which is about 83% of our total operating budget. And all of the remaining lines on this schedule, most other state revenues and all of our federal revenues are just based on expected reimbursements and the grants that we can see that we're going to have coming to us in the various program areas. Are there any questions about the revenues? Okay. So next, we come to our budget plan recap schedule, and this again is the same as you've seen in previous years, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Monsis.
Did we skip the chart, or is that next?
Oh, is the chart next?
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. Why don't you go ahead and cover that, and then we'll...
Okay. New expenditure allocation. Sorry, I had my pages in the wrong order. So when we bring all of our calculations together, recommendations for budget increases and the work that we do in the spreadsheet, the work that we have with our revenue projections, we ended up with $2,344,175 in an amount that we can allocate to new expenditures this year in the budget. So as we go through the rest of the meeting, we'll be talking about how we recommend that be allocated, but it basically comes down to 1.3 million in increases in salary and benefits for existing staff, or about 56%, $450,635 in recommendations for additional staffing, and $593,540 in recommendations for additional supplies and services. So this is the crux of what we're going to be presenting to you tonight, and we've got room for these to change a little bit, but this is basically what we're presenting.
So the intent here is to kind of show you how we've, at this point, tried to prioritize and plan for additional expenditures for next school year. Collectively, between existing staff and new staff, it's about 75% of the additional money goes to staff and about 25% to supplies and purchase services. That's pretty consistent with what our typical budget is from year to year, so this is pretty much in line with that. The overall pie can't really get much bigger, but we can discuss how we might reallocate things within funds. And this is for discussion purposes. The next document we're going to share with you has these numbers assumed and embedded in that, in their assumptions, if you will. And so, as Cindy mentioned, we've got a little bit of flexibility in adjustments that we can do with this, or if the board directs us, we can make significant changes if you so desire, but we think we've had a pretty good planning process so far. And so this next document is our multi-year planning tool that we use from year to year. So those of you that have been on the board, this is familiar to you. I know there's a lot of small numbers and multiple pages, but we're going to focus just on the top page, which is a summary of all the rest of the pages. You'll see that there's actual numbers from 1819 in the first column, this year's current budget, 1920 in the second column, and then the blue-shaded column is next year's preliminary budget numbers. And then we take those numbers out with additional assumptions for three additional years so that we make sure we're looking forward, so that the decisions we make this year, we know we can hopefully sustain moving forward. These numbers have to get updated on a regular basis. Cindy and I trade this worksheet back and forth over the course of a period of three or four months as we kind of revisit assumptions and make adjustments as we go along, but we're pretty comfortable where the overall numbers are in this for 2021 at this point in time. So we've got this growth, just starting from the top, we've got this assessed value growth built into this number and keeping the levy the same. This is not a reassessment year, so what happened this past year where we had to roll back our tax rate would not likely happen in a non-assessment year, so we're assuming a consistent tax rate moving forward for next year. That doesn't get set until August, but we have to have a number to use for our budget at this time. And then some of the major assumptions are then following in the next section there. So we have an estimate right now of 2.7% salary increases for existing staff, and then we have some additional salary built in for new staff. That 0.8% and the related benefits that go with that coordinates with the $450,000 that was shown on the previous pie chart. Health insurance, you heard at the last meeting that our health insurance rates are not going up, but to the extent we add additional staff, we have additional health insurance coverage we have to add to that, so there's an allocation for that. And then you see 3.6% overall increase in supplies and purchase services across the board. We've got some pretty big-ticket items related to that that we're going to cover a little bit later. The next section talks about some of the assumptions from the state formula. This is one area we had to change some of our assumptions. Last year at this time, we were assuming that the state adequacy target would go up. Typically does when they recalculate it every other year, and then they phase in whatever that increase is over two years when they recalculate it. Well, this time, when they recalculate it, it didn't go up. So we had to make that adjustment not only for 2021, to keep it the same, 6,375 per student, but then we had to carry that forward to next year as well, because we know it's not going to change next year either. So really, any additional money we get from the state formula is just going to be because we have additional students. It won't be because of the fact that the target is going up. Collectively, then, the second page of this document has all the different revenues built into it, but then we have a total estimate of revenue for next year of $75,450,000. Those are just in the operating funds, that's separate from debt service and capital projects. On the expenditure side, then, all those salary assumptions and new positions and additional supplies and purchase services are built into those numbers, and you'll see a total estimated expenditure of 73.1 million. With that, we have another adjustment line there. Right in the middle of the page, you'll see a $300,000. That is our assumed turnover savings number that we have, because when staff leave the district, they're typically replaced by somebody less expensive. So 300,000 is kind of what we see as an annual trend, so that's what we built into that. And if we don't account for that, then we kind of potentially end up under-investing in our staff. So part of the reason why you see that pie chart allocation having a bigger total number in it is because we're putting that 300,000 back into the pot, so to speak, for salary So the overall increase in expenditures, after we net out that savings number, is $2,124,000. So it's really 300,000 larger than that, but for the purpose of this worksheet, it assumes everybody that's here this year is here next year, and that 300,000 is just a correction factor that we add in at the bottom. In total, as you get down to the bottom of the page, you'll see that there's a line that says net annual balance or deficit. We're basically proposing a balanced budget for next year. So it shows a $10,000 roughly surplus. Our goal is to kind of keep it level in terms of overall, and with that, our projected balances would be right at 21% at the end of next year. And then just kind of looking forward, we've got a lot of different assumptions built into the years two, three, four, and five, but collectively, we're showing them being, again, positive balances moving forward with a slight decline in that percentage of fund balances. Our stated target is to be around 20%, being between 18 and 22, and we think what we have here for you tonight would keep us in that range for what we can see moving forward. So collectively, that's kind of the overall picture of where we're at. And so the assumptions that are built into this analysis are basically carried forward into the documents that we're going to look at next. And so there is some flexibility in here, based on your input. So as we talk through those items that we're going to talk about coming up, we can kind of decide if we want to, you know, reallocate things in different directions. We have that flexibility as needed. Any questions on all these built-in assumptions before we kind of get into some of the specifics of basically new decision items? By the way, that's a new term I've learned, so when the state does their budget, apparently anything that's different from the current year is called a new decision item. So I've had to learn some new terminology for next year. Let's just put it that way, so...
I like that one. Okay. So the next section of your packet is our new staffing budget recommendations, and I'm going to turn it over to Lisa to go through these with you.
All right, good evening. Just as we have for the past several years, Cindy leads a process with our administrators and supervisors to submit requests for needs that they see in their departments or their schools, and then those requests are then ferreted by the cabinet over many weeks. We look at them a lot, collect more data, and look at them some more, and then this is where we end up with this document for you. So the items at the top, there are two that have been previously approved, so they're givens at this point. Last year, when we approved the foundation grant for a community partner coordinator, the assumption would be that we would carry that position forward, and so this year, we have to encumber the cost of that as our grant doesn't cover it any longer. Also, at the last meeting, you'll recall, we approved one FTE to add an industrial tech position with the main focus of implementing the machining program that we are partnering with the community college to do so. That's a pretty easy section. I'll take any questions you've got on that one. Okay. All right, so our priority one, staffing recommendations. The first item is something you see each year. We anticipate that based upon enrollment or course selection, we are going to have to add some classroom teachers. So just to be on the safe side, we build in two to three of those each year. This year, we are building in two. We don't know what grade levels, what schools yet, but it's just there as a cushion as we need to add more. The second item is a continuation of what you've seen the last couple of years. We are requesting the addition of another mental health professional to our team. I think it would be an understatement to say our staff and students have benefited by the hire of those two positions over the last couple of years, and we see the need, based upon our students' needs, to add an additional position.
One thing I'll just throw in there, last year, you approved a school psychologist position that we weren't able to fill during the course of this year. That would be in addition to this position, so we'll actually net gain two if this position's approved, which is good.
And we filled the school psychologist finally, which is good news.
Are we assuming those classroom teachers are elementary?
No, they're any level. The third item is basically from our technology department, but would very much support our academic services department as well as the schools. As you're aware, we use School Information Systems, Tyler CIS, as our information system, and I wouldn't even guess how much more we are doing in terms of registering kids and enrolling kids and importing test scores.
Pulling data.
Pulling data in the last several years, and our technology department has not increased in numbers to support this. So we are requesting to add a student information system coordinator. This is partially, or would be partially, offset by the reduction of some contracted assistance that we are using this year, so it would help offset that cost a bit.
For the secondary, you have to pull up $25,000 for next year. Do you keep that?
Yes, because you'd have to pay them their full salary. Yes.
But we're also not going to replace the reduction.
Right. We won't...
Technically, it's ongoing. If you continue to...
The fourth item, as much as I hate to talk about them, are substitutes. I love them to death, but it's been hard this year. Many school districts in the area have actually increased their substitute rate during the school year, which is generally not done, but I am requesting for next year that we take a look at those salaries. I'd like to increase the regular substitute hourly rate from $13.50 to $14 per hour. That will take us to $112 as a daily rate, which gets us just a little bit above our neighbors. And I think just that little bit and the fact that our substitutes like to be here will help us with that. It also...
Is that even enough? I mean, I hate to say that, but I know, like, I know what...
You guys went up to 130.
Right, and so...
And it's interesting. I think it's a very delicate balance, because we have, if you think about our other employees, specifically paraprofessionals. We require them to have a substitute certificate. If we aren't careful, the individuals who are filling those roles that don't need medical insurance are going to resign and become substitutes. In some conversations I've had with some districts that have done that this year, they are experiencing that, losing their permanent staff. So I, yes, I do think it's enough. The subs that we have, they're working. It's just the nature of the economy. We are not the only ones experiencing low fill rates, and I'll brag a little bit on our staff, we're doing it without the help of an agency, and some other school districts are paying a lot for agency support, and their fill rates are no better than ours. The other part of the substitute rate is the long-term rate, so that when a teacher is out on an extended leave, we bring in someone to literally become the real teacher for a length of time. We have not increased that rate of pay for many, many, many years. At least, I've been here nine in this position, and I think it was that many years before. So I'd like to increase that to $140 per day. That puts us very competitive with others around us. And then finally, in that section, we are requesting to raise the coverage when teachers take their prep or their plan time and go in and cover a classroom, because we do not have sub-coverage. They receive a very small stipend. We'd like to raise that to the professional rate that we give for curriculum work, professional Moving on to the next page, we are requesting the approval, or your blessing, I suppose, for three FTE for our Early Childhood Center. That would add an early learning teacher, an early learning paraprofessional, and two part-time childcare assistants. Those costs would be offset by the state formula revenue as well as additional tuition that would be collected as the result of that expansion. The Success Academy, I think would be fair to say, has been a great success this year. I don't know what other word I would use. The admin intern that is currently there, we believe that that position warrants the elevation to an assistant principal. Our admin interns are paid on the teacher salary schedule with a few extra days. The individual leading this program is truly leading this program, and we believe that her position should be categorized as an assistant principal.
We have a principal.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown's on the other side of the building. Currently, our admin intern is serving in that capacity, and we really believe we could elevate that to an assistant principal, put her on the administrator's salary schedule, and then have her work and coordinate with Mr. Brown. Oh, I thought we had it on. Sorry about that. And coordinate with Mr. Brown so they could go, you know, still work in tandem, but they're very, it's a very different process for seven-year-olds to 17-year-olds, so we would like them to work together, but, you know, elevate her to the administrator's salary schedule. The hours that she's currently putting in, the work that she's currently doing in planning is not at the admin intern level. It's definitely at the administrator's...
I had forgotten that Mr. Brown is technically the principal of that.
Yes.
If you were to compare her daily job to the other admin interns, it would be, the difference is very obvious. The next item is the request for a special education assessment evaluator. We, psychological examiner, school psychologists, we're kind of, we're looking for something within that realm. Again, we have the opportunity to offset some costs here. We have two 550 evaluators, and they're retired staff members who come back and conduct a lot of our assessment for us. We would eliminate those two positions, as well as through attrition, a paraprofessional position, and the cost of adding that position would be offset. The next item is also, in terms of special education, we are requesting to consider adding a teacher at the high school level. Again, we are offsetting the cost here by, with attrition of two paraprofessionals. I know our special education department has done a lot of looking at the data, our caseloads, our student needs, comparing them to other districts, and we believe that even without the positions we're requesting or saying that we would eliminate, there would be no issue with that, and we would, we believe the certified staff are important in these cases. The next item is kind of a conglomeration of several things. We continue to monitor our extra duties and our student activities to be sure that we are in line with other districts, as well as have what our kids need. So this particular line item is adding some positions that we feel are needed, as well as reclassifying some positions based upon where they currently are on the salary schedule. One of those are our cheer and dance coaches. Where they are located is okay, but in other districts, they have two of those stipends. It's considered like two seasons. Ours are significantly underpaid compared to other districts, so we're trying to rectify that. As well as add an assistant deck-up sponsor. We've had increased participation. Middle school band, we have a lot of participation in our percussion program, so we need adults to support those things. And finally, in our priority section one, we are looking at the differentiation of pay for kitchen managers and lead custodians based upon their building assignment. Our high school is much larger, as are our middle schools, and facilitate many more activities, supervise more people, so we are proposing that we would increase the level of pay for those leads at the high school and middle school levels. Is that correct, Brian? Okay. Okay, that was a lot. What questions or what can I clarify about the things in priority section one?
So we're saying that by eliminating a couple of positions in the sped department, we're still going to be okay?
Yeah, we really need the certified teacher in the special education department. In talking with Ms. Wally and looking at caseloads, and it truly is about caseloads and need related to their specific IEPs, it was determined that those two paraprofessional positions could be eliminated or transferred, honestly, when you look at it. It's more like a transfer, and taking those and turning that into a full-time special education teacher.
Teacher.
Because that was actually needed to reduce overall caseload at that level.
There are many things paraprofessionals don't do. They don't do the testing, they don't do IEPs, things like that, and very much in need of that in the certified area.
And so the same thing with the psych examiner, by getting rid of those positions?
Yeah.
That's truly just a net add, because the two part-timers added up are still far less than a full-time staff.
Yes.
I guess I would have some of the same questions about the special education. I mean, it would seem if you had two paraprofessionals, they could be in two places, and if you replace it with one, even though we need those qualifications, I guess the question I would ask would be, do we, should we make this just an add and not a net? Because how do you account for the two people that could be in two places, but now you have someone that can only be in one place?
Well, Marlena Wally, the Director of Special Ed, did an in-depth study of caseloads and what is, you know, state recommendations, what other districts have, all that kind of stuff, and so it's almost a coincidence that we needed to add a certified teacher at the same time as we're able to get rid of two paraprofessionals.
I will say, based on growth as well and based on numbers, we do evaluate paraprofessionals based on IEPs at the beginning of the year as well. And if we come back and say the need is there based on students that have moved in or changing structures related to IEPs, then I would come back and ask Cabinet, usually based on growth and IEP change, to rehire paraprofessionals as needed.
So based upon the caseload that we have now, going forward a grade level, the numbers line up that there are three positions that the department, and it's not just Mrs. Wally, she has process coordinators and her lead process coordinators, the way it lays out right now, they're not needed. That doesn't mean...
Are you saying that our count went down, our student count went down, and so that's why this makes sense?
It absolutely is based on IEP needs. So, go ahead.
So, like, there's servicemen's that can be provided by an instructional assistant, and there's servicemen's that have to be provided by a special education teacher. So student need of IA services may have gone down, but student need of teacher instruction and sped services may have gone up, which requires more of a teacher than it does a paraprofessional.
And there is an ebb and flow to that based on specific IEPs and adding up all of those servicemen's that are required. It is complicated, but it is based on data.
So I won't claim, obviously, we rely on the experts on that. I guess my hesitation and concern is this is a topic that I think it seems like we hear a lot about lately, is special education, and I would...
And I would just want to make sure that we are not doing anything that will hinder our ability to provide excellent special education services.
Yes.
So, if you all could just look at that one more time and double make sure that we're not doing anything to hinder, since that is a topic we hear about.
Absolutely.
From the sped point of view, I see it as kind of a better thing because we're getting an instructor in there that can provide that specially-designed instruction that a para can't. And so it's almost, it, it's a positive, I think, for our district to have a, a highly-trained teacher inside of the classroom.
Right. And I see that. My concern would just be, do we still need to have a paraprofessional to really?
And that's based off of student need. And as Al stated, we evaluate this all year long.
Ongoing. This is an ongoing.
Students move in, they move out. So, believe me, they are, they are not hesitant to come in and tell us that they need something additional.
And I have absolutely marched downstairs and said, this is where we are, and this, I need the extra help, and I promise. That does happen.
I concur. It's to my office that he comes.
It is true. It is to our office first.
And just real quick, on the extra duty, there were some listed, you know, for increases. I assume that means that all of them were evaluated and those were the only ones that needed to be increased? We didn't just pick some as opposed to others?
We are, we know our salary schedules in general, we are a percentage behind others overall. These positions, specifically cheer and dance, were more than significant because of just the length of that season. When we evaluated in other school districts, either the stipend for that position was nearly twice as much, if not more, or they received the stipend that was a little bit more anyway, two times. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. And if you remember, last year, we had quite a few extra duty additional stipends added and stipends adjusted also. We kind of took it to, as far as we could last year with the amount we had available, we're taking it a little further this year. And next year, there may be some other positions we can address.
And I'm sure you did, just because of timing, with the football issue, were we okay still on stipend for coaching on that issue? Because does football get a stipend as well, or is it a separate issue, separate pay scale?
No, it's on the, it's on the schedule. It's on the schedule.
So it's sufficient?
It's sufficient.
Okay.
Any other questions about category one?
My only other question would be, so there's a pay differential for custodians and managers. Is there any other positions where secondary is paid, gets more than, than the other buildings?
Principals.
Principal.
Okay.
Assistant principals, because we have, we have admin interns at the elementary.
And often their contracts are longer and they have a lot more night supervision than at the, you know, other levels.
I was just trying to get a sense of how prevalent and how much that's needed, I guess.
This is a common practice in many, most school districts of the differentiation.
It makes sense. I just didn't, just didn't know.
I was surprised to see Daily Grind didn't have one yet. They do a lot of work.
They do.
All right. So the second section, as you know, these are the priority twos. So, you know, every, we wish we could say everything was a priority one, but we have to analyze and look at some things. I was going to allow you to ask questions about the items that you see here. If you had clarifying questions that might help you better understand the item, rather than go through them one by one, as I did on the priority ones.
I have a que, in regards to the counselor at East Middle School, what is like their caseload of kids that they see versus, like, what does East Middle School have versus South Middle School? Like, how far off are they?
I, well, I did the admin analysis on the administrators, so.
Well, when you look at it, we're at about 900 students, 903 students, so, and they split at East with two. Yes, with about 675.
For next year, there'll be 891 at East approximately with two counselors.
Say that one more time.
Eight ninety-one, so about 445.
Yeah.
And at South, we're estimating 658 for next year. I've rolled my numbers up. So it's 329.
So, there is a difference. It, it's, it's a difficult decision when you look at it. Absolutely, that'd be something that, that does make sense. You have to ask, well, what are the numbers at the high school level as well? How many counselors do we have? But that, that is a larger number.
What is our high school ratio then? Do we know? Sorry?
No, that's okay.
Just bring that on you.
It's approximately 400, I believe.
Yeah.
Kind of in the middle of those bands, between those two schools. One thing I will point out, that with, with the addition of the mental health supports, our, our thought would be that that's probably going to be secondary-focused, and that would be able to provide assistance that, on some of the things that are part of counselor demand right now. So, we think that's, that will be helpful in that situation.
We are trying to take some of that crisis load, some of those situations that counselors at the top tier of the crisis and get them some more support with some individuals who are trained to do that at a very high level. So when you hire mental health professionals, for example, they have a lot of training in those crisis situations and suicidal ideations and all those, that they can really provide support. So, but I do believe this is an area that we will have to continue to monitor as we grow, to look at specific supports. Because we looked at those, you know, on our mental health task force, and I look at all those numbers, they're very clear. So, this year, it was targeted at the mental health professional. In the very next year, we might really, truly have to come back and say, okay, we need to target the counselor level and look across that and just make a coordinated yearly effort to ensure we're addressing the, the needs of the whole child.
And I think, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. On that, something, you know, that we've talked about, and I think it's in the mental health task force and maybe in board meetings, is just the role of counselors in general and how that's defined. And I think now that we have filled the psychologist position and with the additional mental health positions, my hope would be, that role will take a leadership role in defining our mental health structure.
Yes.
My hope would be that in the coming year, that person would help us identify what is the best structure for mental health and the role of counselors, and that next year, we're talking about that. And maybe that means new positions next year, but I'd like to see a plan, instead of just adding more.
Yep.
I'd like to get a comprehensive plan for what that looks like and how those roles are defined and if they need to change.
I absolutely agree.
Is there a counselor at the academy?
Yes. There, that's shared between the Success Academy and the Raypack Academy. And then they also receive support from our behavior interventionists and our mental health.
Shifting gears just a little bit, I'm sorry, Billy.
I did, I had one more question about technology, computer technician. I know in the past year, we've added thousands of Chromebooks. Do we have sufficient staff to support everything right now? Or, I mean, I would, I would have thought we would have needed somebody long before now to.
No pressure. Some of the technology department, one of you'll see, we had a Level One and a Level Two there. We went ahead and prioritized the, the sys coordinator over the additional technician. If it wasn't a need, it wouldn't be anywhere on these sheets. All of these sheets are needs. So I'm never going to sit here and tell you that we have plenty of help with our technicians.
Thousands of devices. And my other question was, over the summer, do we refresh those ourselves? Or do we send those out to be refreshed? And do we have enough staff to refresh these things? How's that work?
We hire summer interns in the technology department that assist the department with a lot of that grunt work.
I just know it's a lot of devices.
We're very fortunate. Our library media specialists, our digital learning teachers, they've really stepped up to assist in main, in maintenance of these things. But yes, we do hire two to three summer techs that assist our department.
And we have stabilized our total number of devices at this point. We've gotten the full rollout of who's got the one-to-one devices. So now we're just refreshing those. And one, one thing that works to our advantage is that we refresh them fairly quickly. So, we don't keep the individual devices more than four years. And I think at the middle school, it's just three years, and we recycle at that point. There are some districts that keep devices for eight and 10 years and, and, you know, it just, it just doesn't work that well that long for those hand, individual devices.
High school students are keeping them over the summer, aren't they? I mean, there's.
We allow them to take them home. A lot of them use them in summer school.
Right.
Which even extends into July now.
I was just going to say, that's less devices to have to.
What's really nice, I mean, and a lot of the people in the community probably don't know, is if you go to a, a desk, or not a desktop, but a laptop, like a Windows-based machine, the amount of updates and upkeep, and if you've got to wipe that thing and reload and put everything back on it, it's so time-consuming. And with Chromebook, you can put in a jump drive, flash it, and you're done. And it's so easy, and I'm so glad that the district went that route instead of supporting a different type of device because it.
There are a lot of things we can just push out universally versus having to
Yes.
touch each device.
Yep. Great platform.
Just to jump back to the paraprofessionals, we, I know that's a challenging position for you to fill a lot of times. Is that something that for $12,000, that should be moved up to a one?
So what we're asking there is we are going, we would like to differentiate between our level of pay based upon the program or not being in a program. So we have some significant behavioral and academic and developmental needs of kids in some of our programs, compass, primary life skills, that we would like to differentiate and have a higher salary. Because the level of responsibility for those paras is greater than, and the stress than.
Professional development.
And the, sometimes the physicalness as well. And like we said, everything on here is important and we, if you want to just give it all, that'd be great.
We think that's a pretty important.
That is one. Cindy might fall over.
She's over there.
That one is one I would like to see us consider. You know, because last year, we looked at, was it behavior interventionist? Or, I'm not sure what the title was, that, or, that we raised their pay because they are.
Teacher associate.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry.
It was teacher associate. I think this would be.
How many elementary instructional coaches do we currently have?
That is a great question. We have two. And we have now eight buildings that they are serving, and that is very difficult. And we ask them to do a lot, and they're wonderful. But with the position, the demands and the travel and the time that are required, just logistically to make that work in their collaborations has been.
That would sit out to me too.
Very difficult.
That would have a great impact on a great number of students and is one of our top goals, you know, success.
I believe it would be very impactful.
It's, it's at the top of the list for a reason. It'd be the one we would probably pick first.
I didn't know if, that's why I assumed.
They're not necessarily all ranked, but that one, that one.
You're trying to get as close to priority one as possible.
Would there be a way to?
Yes, we were.
Would there be a way to fit that into the budget?
Yes.
And now, can you explain, like, where we're at with administration at South Middle, where we're at with administration at East Middle, and what those would mean for generations?
Sure. So, at East right now, we have two, we have a head principal, an assistant principal, and an intern. That works out to be, using next year's numbers, about 300 to one in terms of ratio. At South, we have a head principal and an assistant principal. And we do have some blocks of time that are being utilized from a teacher who is certified to be a principal. Instead of teaching a class, there's room in his schedule that he is pulled and assists in the office. So their ratio right now is 329, or it would be 329 to one. So very similar.
Counting that teacher?
Not counting.
I did not count the teacher. No, I didn't know quite how to count him.
Well, that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
I believe it averages about two, two periods a day, so it'd be, it'd be pretty close to comparable.
Usually when he, when that teacher comes on, is that he's filling the role of somebody else or?
He actually has open periods in his course schedule. So instead of, he's not teaching his normal subject, he actually is assigned to the office during that time.
He will help. He'll just support. He's not replacing.
So he typically has a plan time and then two.
Times to assist.
Just based on.
And because of the, he actually, at South, we're very fortunate. We have several teachers who are admin-certified. When one of the principals is gone, they actually, we do get a substitute for them, and they step into an administrative role on that day to support.
And we don't do that in all situations.
No.
But we feel with their leaving just one full-time administrator, we think we do need to get them a substitute, substitute help when that occurs.
I don't know if you'll know the answer to this, but at the high school level, do you know what our ratios are and what, what we have there?
Yeah. I mean, we can do the math.
I'm sorry, I should have thought of that ahead.
It's close to 400.
Yeah.
Because we have five administrators, not counting the activities director, and close to 2,000 students. It's not quite 400, or.
So we have one principal and three assistants at the high school?
Four.
Four.
Associate. You have a head, an associate, three assistants.
Three assistants.
So I think what I'm hearing, unless there's additional comments, that there's interest in the instructional coach and the paraprofessional pay differential, I think was the consensus items I hear here at this point. And we did leave a little room to make some adjustments because we always anticipate some additional input. I think we can, we can cover those within our overall parameters. Beyond that, we might have to start talking about pulling back in other places.
How about the ISS supervisors? How many do we have currently?
At the high school, so at the, right, I was just going to start with the ISS supervisors. We actually just have one ISS supervisor district-wide, and he is assigned at the high school. At the middle schools, we have focus facilitators, which serve as a role in our BIST continuum for the focus room. So they supervise that, and then that is also the ISS room. So it's a dual role.
Focus facilitator, that's the one we worked on a couple of years ago.
Yes.
So they, Paul, they have somebody that serves in that role, but they're serving two roles. So the request would be, at some point, can we split that out and, and have two different people doing that? They serve typically relatively small numbers, but they ebb and flow from day to day.
Yes, some days it could be more than others. It would be, it's a situation where, where you, when you have to prioritize, it would be very nice. I've worked in systems that had both. It is very nice when you have two rooms because you can build two different environments. One, you're truly just trying to calm, rework on skills, get them back in the classroom. The other, you're in in-school suspension. You're working on your homework. Right now, we basically divide the room, subdivide the room, and half the kids are working in that ISS environment. And the other half, it's not ideal. I would not say it was ideal, but where it sits along the priorities might be just personally a little bit lower than some of the others that maybe we've discussed, but still important. And if, if we grow much more or if needs change along the other lines, then I think we'll absolutely have to revisit it. It would be nice to have two.
You know, we sometimes hear that we're administrator-heavy. I know, I'm sorry. What are, and do you know, what are Desi's recommendations like on the ratios?
We can look them up. I'll look them up. I always forget the actual number.
No, I wasn't.
Have we gone over to priority three yet?
No, we haven't, but we're, we're welcome to talk about those as well. We just kind of rank them one notch below. Welcome to have any conversation you'd like on those.
Does Shoal not have a counselor currently?
It just, no, Shoal does not.
Does not, okay. And how many students is the counselor at the academies have on their caseload?
The high school program, there's usually between 55 and 65 students as it ebbs and flows. And then at the Success Academy, there's no more than 15.
Yeah, 10 to 15 more. I think we have an opportunity to be a little creative and to support early learning before. That was, you know, in talking with the director. As we grow, this is one of those, we'll have to continue as the early learning program grows. But I think we can be with the additional mental health professional and use of counselors that might be right in the Success Academy.
Right.
I think that we can provide the needed services.
Okay.
Just out of refresher, we have talked about that purchasing manager before. And what has always been our logic on that?
I'm only.
Because I know we just had the paper that we approved.
Well, there's been a lot of considerations in that area. And one is trying to stay lean at the administrative level. And, and you might be referring to my comment last year when it was asked about saying that when we could see that much in savings, we could probably add that position. Or we could, we could justify adding that position. So I don't, I mean, it's, it's priority three right now because the academic things are always going to take priority over something that's only administrative.
It's, it is kind of hard to know exactly where you would realize those savings until you do it. At some point, you just kind of have to take the leap and hope you do have the savings to, to cover it. We have, we have become more effective of doing more bid processes and things over time. But there's, there's a limit. processes and things over time. But there's, there's a limit to how far that will go. We just didn't think it rose to the same level of some of the other items.
How much should we save with the paper?
I'm sorry, what?
How much should we save?
Oh, it was.
It was 13,000.
I mean, doesn't that almost?
Is that something where created use of intern that was overseen by your department? You could put them on a research project and if we found one thing a year, that might be?
We have done some of that analysis. And I, I mean, I'll be honest, I, I think that I'm probably a little more optimistic about the savings that we could realize than, than Dr. Monsis. But, and I really think that 50,000 is, is probably a conservative estimate. I can't promise though, that it would pay for itself. But another thing, since I'll just, you know, nobody else is going to advocate for me, I'll advocate.
Tell me what you want me to say.
Tell us what you kind of try.
And this isn't, this isn't for me personally, this is for the district. But, you know, as we look forward in our long-range facility plan at having, you know, some significant construction projects coming up, this is an area where we could get somebody in there, get them familiar with the, if we, to really hire a good one, it's likely that we would get one from outside of school, the school environment. So to learn what school purchasing policies are, to learn all of that, to give them a year to ramp up to that.
Head at home.
If we're going to come out, if we're going to be doing some, some construction next year, that way, well, yeah, not this, have them, have them onboard this year so that the following year, they're ready for those, those contracts. And then, you know, that's going to provide our buildings and grounds and our academic services areas with a lot more assistance. And so that's just another perspective on it.
Would it need to be full-time or could it be like a part or point seven five?
It's probably, to get a really qualified person, it's probably going to need to be full-time.
I think you want somebody full-time because I wouldn't want a part-time person trying to help out with building construction and everything on down the road.
It's, it's going to be a professional. And the estimates here are for someone with a college degree who, you know, would, would really know business and purchasing and that sort of thing.
Can I ask about the LEAP program? How many LEAP teachers do we have, like at the elementary level versus middle, one?
One.
Middle school, one?
One that's shared between the two buildings.
So I know it's hard to compare the two, but on the other end of the spectrum, special education, how many teachers or professionals do we have in, in that department?
Far more. You're serving quite a few more students. But I do believe your topic absolutely is, needs to be discussed. Looking at, we are approaching class size that Dr. Hoffman and I do agree are at the, the top of our comfort level, maybe our spectrum, if that's the right way to put it.
Sure.
And so we're looking at, as our assessment numbers come in, and we're looking at what are new numbers, because we'll get those soon, whether we need to address that, if they, because that does change quite a bit. And it can change.
My other question was?
So do we need a teacher associate? Would it be something that time I'll have to come back and say, this is a growth position?
Right.
But we won't know those numbers for a month or so, May.
The other thing is, how many kids, I mean, do we kind of scale the LEAP program on how many kids we can accommodate with that one teacher? Or is it anybody that tests over this is going and we'll just have to?
Correct. Well, that's why it really is, in my mind, is a growth number for sure. So I can come back and say, we had this many more qualify, we're going to need some additional support.
And in that conversation, you would hear him say, you saw this on, as a priority, although it didn't hit level one. It was a priority to let you know this is a possibility.
And it is a possibility.
When you say you're reaching numbers, what is the typical class size for LEAP now?
Yeah, I can be. I mean, it looks like a 22, 23, 24 as we're looking in there. We, and it's a way you address it as a, as a district. We've placed a fairly high priority on it, being that students attend our LEAP program for an entire day, one day a week. Many districts might answer that question by saying, oh, we can reduce class size, we'll do half the number of hours. Because we do more, or do quite a bit. We provide that, that's a good program. Personally, I've seen that even on the parent side of things be productive. So I think we just want to look at growth, make sure we don't get over those numbers, and then find out, it might be, we see numbers in May, and we have a discussion at the administrative level with Dr. Hoffman and, and the LEAP department and say, it might be better served if we just got some, a teacher associate dedicated to them, just some help. Because currently, I'm very pleased with how the program's going and instructor, how things are. And so I'm not necessarily looking to maybe divide and conquer right now. But that is going to be, as we grow, I believe that program's going to grow. And that is an inevitable conversation.
True. And it's been one teacher for a long, long time.
And we are getting to the point where, three years, we're getting to the point where we're either going to have to, I mean, support them in another capacity, maybe with a teacher associate dedicated to the program, or just come back and say, we've grown too much.
Which, say, 3,000 students in K5, is that not appropriate, the average number of students that have in LEAP? Do we have?
Our numbers, I think they're comparable to
Comparable.
Overall, yes. I think they are comparable. And we don't, and we're not extremely high or under identifying, you know?
That's what I was.
It looks like we are identifying appropriately and giving students those. We have a very open system. I mean, any parent can request testing, any teacher can request testing. We don't have that kind of benchmark. And so we test a lot of kids and if they qualify, we will find a way to provide them high-quality programming.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or clarifications on the personnel?
So is it a consensus then out of the category two to go ahead and add the instructional coach and the pair of pay differential to our planning? Are we okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So what happens, and we'll come back to some summary information here in a little bit. But what happens is, we will bring a list of positions for you to approve at the next meeting so we can go out and hire the ones that we've identified within here. So Lisa's already been working on that.
I'll just add just a couple of things to my memo.
Thank you, Lisa. So I'm going to go down the recommendations for supplies and purchase services with you now. And this is put together in the same way as the staffing recommendations, with the first section being the, the recommendations that are related to staffing positions or programs that have been previously approved, starting with our machining program. Now, the 100,000 that's shown for that program is the net amount of district investment after the grants that we have already applied for. And we've, you know, that, we, we don't know until late June whether or not those grants are going to be approved. But that, there's some flexibility in the plans for that program. And so we think that we can stay relatively close to that $100,000 there. If not, we'll come back and propose something else later. But, okay, the project lead the way course additions are also related to the grants that were approved at the February meeting. Community partnership, this is not the entire amount that we had in our budget this year under the Kaufman grant, but enough to keep that program going with the, with the position that's being maintained.
Do we?
Go ahead.
Do we have any kind of, not a rubric, but any kind of system in place to know if that is paying for itself as far as, are we getting value for it? Just in the future?
Yeah, at this point, we wouldn't have any revenue that would be able to show as an offset. But we would expect him to track his activities over time. And as those partnerships continue to develop and businesses are doing in-kind contributions, we can always add value to those and try to say, here's what the benefit to us would have been. Or sometimes they'll do it for us if, if, if it's beneficial to them, so.
Just so that we can show that that is a needed position in the, in the long term.
Absolutely.
Okay, the last item on this page is just our already contracted increase in our bus, bus contract with Apple, Apple Bus. Are there any questions on this page of recommended increases? Okay.
At 3.9%, that was always.
That's in our original contract that was approved, yeah, three years ago, or two years ago now. But it'll be the third year.
Do we still feel like we're sufficient in the number of monitors we have?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I mean, that's something I can request as needed as well. We have those conversations weekly.
And then, I know we've talked in the past of where we're at on trying to get an app that the parents could see where the bus is, how late it's going.
Yeah, we're, we have it on our two most rural routes currently. And we're looking at adding on the other three routes for this coming year. The route, there's a three-minute delay on the app is really what the delay is here. And I think it may actually cause more, and on in-town routes that are normally pretty close to on time, that delay in the app may actually cause more issues than it solves. But we are adding it with that caveat of the delay to our far outreach reaching routes.
Because we want it to work with our SIS system, correct?
Well, that goes through ZONAR. But yes, it's all tied through a third party backing into our information system and our TransFinder.
Thank you.
Okay, so the second page is all of the supplies and purchase services requests that are priority one. And the first two items on there just relate to our, the, the priority one staffing positions that we just increased. So it just takes, they have to have a device, they have to have a room set up, that sort of thing, for the, for those added positions. Since we expect enrollment to grow next year, we are proposing an amount for the supplies budget that are budgeted per student. Comes to 14,500. Property and casualty insurance, anytime we're adding to salaries, our workers' comp premium is going to go up because that's based on your salary. So there's an estimate of that. And that number actually includes a little bit of catch-up of last year where our rates increased just a little more than we had expected.
Little bit of a side effect of giving pay raises, they come back the next year as additional work comp premiums, so.
Exactly. District-wide utilities, we just, every year need to budget for some increase in those utilities. The human resources costs, the biggest part of this is the new policy and the, the plan to pay for the additional fingerprinting that we're requiring our staff members to have. And that includes staff members who were never fingerprinted and staff members who need a second set of, of fingerprinting since then. It also covers a little bit of an increase in advertising costs so that we can be sure and get, we're getting quality candidates. And then also an increase in our software costs there. The pre-K Sharks Den expansion that we talked about, the additional positions for, are going to require some setup. But again, we expect this cost to also be offset by our increase in state formula revenue that we're getting for those students and increased tuition.
And just to clarify, I don't know that we really covered it on the staffing side. So what we're talking about doing is taking two class, two sections that are now half-day and making them full-day. So our students who are free and reduced lunch eligible, we can get reimbursement through the state formula. And so taking them from half-day to full-day provides them additional services with a certified teacher. And there's enough additional state aid that comes in to cover the cost of those teachers and the supplies that go with that.
Do we have a waiting list for that program? Or are we able to sufficiently take care of the students?
I think we're doing all the instructional side, some of the Sharks Den, I think we may have a small waiting list for Sharks Den. I think what will happen though is when we increase from a half-day to a full-day for our qualified students, we will get more participation demand. We have enough, almost enough now to go to full-day in that regard within those students that we can count for state aid. This will just make sure that that's utilized to the maximum ability.
Our CTE enrollment on the next line, just as those opportunities expand and there are more places that we can put our students, we want to budget for that so that we can send everyone who has a spot to go to. Middle school sports uniforms and equipment, as we look back over the last three years, we just really didn't budget that adequately in the first place when we set up South Middle School. It was hard at that time to estimate what it was going to cost at each one of the buildings. So we're just asking for an additional 7,000 there, spread really across both middle schools and the high school. District-wide buildings and ground supplies, this is another area where the costs just keep going up. So cleaning supplies, we may need more of those real soon here. Actually, we're using more of those now. But anyway, so we're just budgeting or estimating a 2% increase there in those supplies. So our total previously approved and, and planned and priority one recommendations is 593,540. Are there any questions on this page? Those are pretty slam dunk, cut and dried things, yeah. So priority two, there isn't a lot in priority two because we don't, we don't find many that are, are really that optional. Fixed asset inventory, we've been talking about it over a couple of years, which would be very nice to have. But we really can't say it's more important than, than our salary and benefits increases and our, and our other supplies. So it's, it's relegated to priority two again this year.
Probably pairs up well with the, when we do add the purchasing person, have that person also be responsible for the inventory management side.
It does.
Right now, it's just kind of a shared responsibility by department right now.
Right. You know, I remember us talking about this from when I was on the audit committee. And my concern is, I mean, one of the benefits of this is if we had a large insurance claim, right, we would better be able to recoup on that. And so in my mind, how, how do we not do this?
Yeah.
Because if we have, I mean, we could, you know, what would we lose if we didn't have it, is how I look at it. Now, if you're saying we don't have the staff to do the work to run the program, and that we can't do that till we have the purchasing manager, I guess. But for 38,000, and if we had a million or tens of million-dollar claim, would we be able to, what would it cost us to not have this, I guess, is what I'm asking?
I guess my experience would be with our current consortium we're in with music, they, they, they have a pretty good sense of values of things that are in schools in general. We, we can get pretty close on what our inventory would be. And they're, they're very amenable and helpful in terms of identifying what the appropriate values are for things.
So you're saying the risk there would be low?
It's less, it's less risky than working with a private carrier outside of the music pool that we're in. Because I've been in both situations and getting claims paid with an independent carrier is much more difficult than getting claims paid with our.
And that would be my experience as an independent.
Right, so.
And, and we have, we have good inventory records on our technology, which is where probably the biggest investment is. The things like desks and chairs and, you know, things like that are, are where we might get some benefit there. But, you know.
Okay.
We can estimate that pretty easily.
That makes sense. Thank you.
So the last item here though is just, really just kind of a reminder that those priority two and three positions also have some supplies associated with those. So like the instructional coach, we're going to need some in-district mileage reimbursements, we're going to need some setup there. So, so we'll probably pull about $2,000 of that 19,000 to, to add to our supplies and purchase services to, to fund that.
Cover the additional position.
Yeah.
Okay. What are you moving on to next? I know when to ask my question.
The, well, we are, we're going to talk about these last few pages. Actually, we're not going to go through these in detail. But if you have any questions over anything we've been over so far, go ahead and ask now.
So I, I would just like to go, so you gave us our score, the scorecards.
Uh-huh.
And so we have 16 scorecards, you know, all the different major areas, you know, the gifted program, library, media, professional development. And so out of those 16, special education is one of the bottom two. And significantly so compared to the others. So again, I would just like to ask that an additional look be taken, and whether that's additional supplies or software or programs or, you know, I don't know what, what is needed. But it just seems that, I think we've taken a good step with combining and getting the, the different type of professional in there. But is
And is that, are there budgetary implications to that? Because now's the time to make those decisions.
We, and I absolutely appreciate that. I think in looking at the scorecard for special education, a lot of it's academic, these are academic measures, other than the parent overall satisfaction, which is one of the higher scores. So looking at that, the way the instructional coach would be a great, because they're going to support special education teachers as well, how we're working, the more I believe we can target those academic supports for all of our teachers, including our special education teachers, the more we'll see these numbers improve.
And again, I just come back to, we're cutting a position, you know, we're doing that net-net thing, and so my question is, is there, maybe it's a different position, maybe we redefine, maybe it's a specialist just for special education.
Yeah.
I really think we need to put some more, invest some more investigation into-
Okay.
What do we need to be doing there, and specifically, how are the things in our budget going to move that? How do you all think it's going to move that? And if you think it's going to move it, then great, we'll look next year and see if it did.
Okay.
Right, but if we need more, now's the time to talk about that.
I absolutely don't have any problem doing that.
Because everything else is a five, and a 5.4, and a 5.2, right?
Yes, no, I absolutely-
We need to move that significantly.
Will look in that. And whatever we can do to improve that would be something I absolutely have no problem if we all believe that's going to help our students in that area, we will go that direction, so.
I agree.
So the instructional, so you envision the instructional coach helping in that area only, or just kind of flexing, flexing that?
It's spread over K through five, so they would be, that would just be-
So they're going to be stretched pretty-
Right.
Yes, they're already stretched thin, but I do think an additional one will help, I really do.
Well, I was just wondering, because in our, I don't have it with me, but the scorecard for our math was low, and we were trying to implement a new curriculum to help the teachers understand that-
Correct.
And help with that, which would envision, I would envision the instructional coach doing, so that's a huge undertaking-
Yes.
-of itself. So then you're adding, if you're wanting to add special ed, there's, I mean, you're, you're almost putting that person, person in a position to fail.
I don't want to do that. That would not help anybody. I do think that when we train our, our math teachers, and when we work on the specific things, we include our special education teachers in that training. I mean, by adding it, you've just increased our, our capacity to do that at an incredible rate. We've been working with two for a number of years, so even adding one more, I am, I can't tell you how excited I am, because we're going to be able to have those trainings. I am very excited that you prioritize that, I'm just going to tell you that's the truth right now. I was very hoping that you would look at that. But in that area, we could say special education teachers who work on all the contents are going to be in those trainings, receiving the added benefit as well. I don't think it's the only thing. I, I agree with Kim and what you're saying. I think we need to go back and say, what else can we do? But I do believe the instructional coach is truly going to help. And I would like to, to begin, and Dr. Hoffman and I are talking about specializing their trainings a little bit more than we have at the elementary level in the past, and, and helping them help our teachers, so they might specialize a little more in that math area, specialize a little more in some of those areas that our special education teachers need as well, and that individual can then really provide a deep level of support. Elementary's hard, because you're talking, walking into a classroom where the teacher teaches everything.
Our current coaches are also mentors to our special education teachers, so that's another one of the roles they, they play. To put it a little bit in perspective, there was one point a few years ago where we had nine instructional coaches, and as we, we went through 10-11, 11-12, we significantly reduced those numbers.
I think I've asked you before, and I don't remember if I got an answer, have we been able to see through our NWEA testing how our math scores are trending since we've added the coach and have implemented more of the new math curriculum?
Secondary. They are, oh, at the secondary level or elementary levels?
That's where the math is at secondary.
Yes, we, we, I'm excited about this being an elementary focus, because while we have seen some growth in specific areas, and I can tell you, I've seen a little more growth in the areas that have implemented the math over two years. Remember, we did a rollout where we started like K1 and 5, and then this year finishing 2, 3, and 4. So I think we're noticing a little lag, of course, in the ones that haven't been implementing it for two years. So it does take time to make that instructional shift and go to that deep level, but we are seeing it help. This instructional coach is going to benefit us at the elementary level, and I think it'll just be a part of the overall package. But I do like the idea of, of going back to Marlene Wally and our special education and say, what else can we do to support you, even along staffing, but I love the idea of programs, I love the idea of across the whole spectrum that might make your ability as a teacher to impact those kids a little easier, a little better.
Okay, I will just briefly explain these last few pages, and so the elementary-middle school supply allocations, this just shows how much we will be allocating out to the elementary and middle schools, but on a per-student basis. The next page is our debt service schedule. So up until now, we've been talking about our operating budget, that's, would be Fund One and Fund Two, if you're familiar with that. Now we're looking at Fund Three, the debt service, which is supported by a separate levy. These are our bond payments. The next page is the lease payment schedule. Well, if you remember last year, we refunded, refinanced those leases, and so this, this is our new payment scheduled from that. Are there any questions over these informational pages?
Michelle, if you want to pull up the pie chart again, which is number six, there you go. So collectively then, amongst all this, we kind of started here early in the process talking about how we would allocate things, so collectively, we had enough room to add the couple of items that you've suggested that we add and do this, and so what I need to confirm with you now is that you're comfortable with using that 1.3 million allocation for Team Ray Peck. And the nice thing about that is this year, with a zero increase in health insurance, all of that money can go to additional salary for our current staff. So we, at the last meeting, kind of did a first draft using a lower number, I believe it was 1.2 million, but when looking at our numbers closer and having this discussion tonight, we're comfortable with using that 1.3 million for, for them, which will give them an extra amount of flexibility in terms of putting together, working with us to put together a recommendation for salary improvements. That's enough to probably add, you know, in the neighborhood of $400 to the base, but they may also do something less than that and pick other specific areas to add monies to different schedules or different positions, which we've kind of given that flexibility to be part of that process. So just, it's just kind of a head-on confirmation at this point that we're okay using this assumption that we have built into this analysis.
I have one question. We saw a blowback, you said, of the workman's comp kind of went up because of the last, and I'm sure if we approve this, we'll see that again. Remind me, do you remember how much that was, that it bumped up our workman's comp?
Well, you have to remember that we, we did a much significant, much more significant increase the last couple of years in terms of total dollars. So we had $165,000 built into this, some of that is catch-up, some of that is projecting forward. My guess is we'll have to have another catch-up number again another year. Normally, you know, normally that increases by a relatively small amount, but just those last two years have kind of caught up to us, do we need to do some catch-up?
Playing catch-up, it kind of got us a little bit.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be much, should be a smaller number in future years, barring some big windfall that we can put into salaries.
So looking at, looking at the competition side of it, where would that put?
At this point, we don't know what everybody else is going to do.
Right, I get it.
And as I mentioned back in the fall, when we looked at some of our salary comparisons, when we start comparing to other districts on average salary, we're a year in arrears. The, you know, we won't know until December how the two years of investment through PropRP have really helped us. Year one moved us up a little bit, year two will move us up some more. My guess is with this kind of an increase, we ought to at least be keeping pace. There'll be a few districts that do more than that, but most of the districts I've talked to are doing steps and maybe steps plus a little bit, so I think we'll at least be in the middle of pack. I don't think we'll lose ground collectively with this.
I guess my thought would be, I mean, we've asked about the special education, we've mentioned math, I mean, do we need to set aside some amount out of that for what you all come back to after you do some more research on that? I mean, do we need to set aside $50,000 or something? Or, I'm not sure. But, you know, we've asked for more information on that, what if you come back and say, oh yeah, we can do this, this, and this, but we've already committed that? So I'm not sure how the timing works there.
I think that's a great question. I just think, in my mind, as you were discussing it, there are some potential programs that I've already been talking with Marlene Wally about, and things that could help in our special education department, but I think some of that could be and can be allocated and is already allocated to the funds that we have for general discretion regarding curriculum and purchasing. So in that programming, there are a couple of things that you specifically, you know, you mentioned programming, and I went immediately to improvements that I'd like to see, but I do believe the majority of that could be encumbered within current budget.
Same if it were professional development or things like that, it would be already in the budget.
Yes, and I think the things they are.
Our staffing analysis would tell us that our ratios are, are pretty effective or comparable at this point, so that comes down to one of those other programming items.
Yeah.
If there is something that is not capable of being fit into our current budgets, we can come back to you with that, but given the fact that we're, you know, just, we're above our 20% target, if it ends up being 30 or $40,000 with the programming items, we can figure out how to make that work, so.
Okay.
That's a good question, I think we can, if, if there's that silver bullet that we think is out there, we'll, we'll not hesitate to bring it back to you.
Going back to this from just overall global perspective, you know, we are graded by the state and by our patrons sometimes on our map scores. Can we say, I just pulled up East Middle School, you know, they say 52% are advanced, advanced or proficient in, in language arts, and 46% in math. Can we say that the things that we're doing are going to help improve those numbers?
I think we'll absolutely be able to tell over time. Hopefully, we'll have a consistent map test, and we won't have anything occur in the next month or so that leads to an inconsistent testing season, but we're absolutely seeing those trends, I know I shouldn't have mentioned that now, but we're absolutely seeing those trends in the positive direction.
And I wasn't trying to throw you under the bus.
No, no, we look at those all the time, so, but I, I do think that there's more that we'll have to continue to do.
Which means what?
Which means when we come back to you on a yearly basis, as we review these things, and we ask for additional academic support, like tonight, when you pulled up the instructional coach, and I think that's got to be an ongoing dialogue, because there are things that we absolutely will need to continue to grow that.
So do we need two more instructional coaches? I mean, math is one of, when you look at the biggest factors that are impacting us, what is going to move that the most? And if you said instructional coach, you know?
I'll give my opinion, what moves that the most, the most is recruiting and retaining your core classroom teachers, and I think that's where I like to really be in the blue part of the circle as much as possible for the people that already work here and the people we're going to recruit and retain over time, so.
So I think we need to remember this conversation next year, and we need to look and see if it worked, right? I mean, we, we need to start assessing what is going to move that, and as we make these decisions, which we've made some significant ones in the past few years, did it really move it or not?
How often do we see the NWA testing, I mean?
Three times a year.
I know you guys do, but how often do we see it?
Usually in one chunk section. We, you know, I was talking with Ruth about how we could provide that in a, you know, a little more bite-sized chunks-
Yeah, and I think that's what she's going to get at.
-so we're not spending three hours on it in one meeting. Because it's easy to get overwhelmed in that one meeting in October when we talk about-
Don't make a knee-jerk reaction.
Oh, yeah, it's like 15 different academic measures for three and a half hours, so if we could find some way to chunk that to where it still made sense and you got good data, you don't, you don't want to look at data that's not reliable or, or going to trend totally differently in the next two or three months. So you have to be careful.
And to the point about retention, I, I understand and agree with that being important, but we're always going to have turnover, and so how do you compensate for that? That's not going to go away, so what is the, what is the answer? You know?
I would like to say one last thing, and I promise, I know Carrie will, please don't stop, but anecdotally, I would like, absolutely, it is a balance from our academic service department. We balance these things and the resources, and we can provide instructional coaches, curriculum materials, great focus on academics, and then the staffing balance, because anecdotally, been watching the videos of the teachers who are applying, teacher candidates, who are applying for our positions, and I have been very excited while watching those, because I've seen our quality continue to improve because we've done both things. We've supported them, and so to Dr. Montes' point, that pie chart that you see is extremely important in that, but I can promise you this, I will always advocate for those supports that I think are going to need it, because those kids sitting in the classroom need that help too. So it is a balance, and we're doing the best I think we can with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions we can answer for you this evening? Okay, moving forward, it'll be consistent with the schedule Cindy has shared with you. There are, there's a lot of work she has to do between now and the June retreat, where we spend more time with the final budget project and, and ask you to approve it at the June regular meeting, so.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a big project, and she always does a good job putting the overall budget document together, so if we have other things that come up, we'll certainly bring those to you, and, and at this point, we'll report back on the things that we've talked about tonight as we need to.
Any more questions, comments, concerns? All right, if there's nothing else, meeting adjourned.
Recession to closed.
Oh, recess to closed, I'm sorry.